Good morning, everybody. Welcome to this week's City Council Study Session. And we are going to start off with a brief interview with Livia. And then we're going to hear from some leaders from MMP. And then we're going to get an ARPA RFP update, and then we're going to have a budget presentation. So, Livia Co., I believe, but you can correct your name for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, let's, what committee is she? My agenda just went on.
Hi. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes. Okay, Livia.
Okay, Livia.
Now, my screen went blank. I was trying to figure out what committee or commission. So you are, have been nominated by the mayor to be on our Human Rights Commission in Spokane.
I think you guys are muted.
Oh. Are we, can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
I can hear you. I can't see you.
Oh, you can't see us? All right. We're working on that. But if you can hear me, we can see you.
We can see you.
Okay.
So, thank you for applying for the Human Rights Commission. And we just like to get to know people before we vote to approve them. And so if you could give us a little bit of background on yourself, and then why you want to serve on the commission, and what you think you would bring to it.
Yeah, of course. So, I'm currently 15 years old, and I'm going to be a sophomore at Mead High School this fall, in the coming, like, a few weeks, actually. And I kind of applied for this because I really wanted to do more with leadership and try and work towards, like, positive change in terms of representation, as well as being able to make a difference by serving my community. I don't know. I was influenced by both my leadership within student council. I served as the class senator for the freshman class. And then I also did a lot of debate this past year. And so, both of those things really showed me how much it means to be able to communicate your ideas and be able to fight for what matters. So, yeah.
Could you tell us again which high school you attend?
Mead.
Mead, okay, great. Other, Councilmember Streton.
I thank you for applying, and I'm very, very impressed so far. So, thank you. We need more young people to get involved and to have their voices heard. So, thank you so much for your willingness to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So, as you were looking, I think it's great that you're a sophomore looking for leadership opportunities. I think this is fantastic. And when you were looking at the different boards and commissions, what was it about the Human Rights Commission that drew you to it?
I think, first of all, the actual fact that they had a youth representative position, because I don't think very many others do. And so, seeing that this one was open, and that I do have an interest in human rights, and I think, very importantly, that you guys wanted to open up that spot, I decided to apply.
Great. That's a good, that's good feedback for us, knowing that that slot. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
All right. Well, I just wanted to also commend your debate background, two daughters that did four years of debate. And I judged a lot of kids, especially a lot of Mead kids, because I couldn't judge high school kids from my daughter's school. And I just think it's like the best preparation ever. And if I could require it, I would require it of all high school students. So, thanks for doing that. Thanks for your service on this. We will vote on this shortly and let you know. You don't have to come for the vote. And we really look forward to hearing your perspective. So, thanks.
All right. Thank you so much. Do I stay, or do I?
Nope. You don't have to stay. You can if you want, but you don't need to. We're going on to some other topics.
All right, then. I'll see you. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You, too.
All right. Now, I'd like to invite up Dave Kocat and John Clapp from the MMP leadership to give us an update.
All right. Thank you, City Council. Hopefully, you can hear me okay. Microphone distance, background is not strong, so let me know if I'm too loud or too quiet here. So, I appreciate you taking the time out for us today. As you know, quite a few different bargaining units the city has, or one of them, believe it or not. We wanted to give you a little bit of background here on who we are as an association, go through some of the current, kind of, items of interest that we're dealing with, and then give you a chance, either as we're going through or at the end, to ask some questions you might have of us. So, we'll get things kicked off here. So first, who are we? Who is this MMP that we throw at you with an acronym here? So, we're the managerial and professionals working for the city of Spokane. So, this means many different things, as you've probably seen with the different job titles we have in the city. Sometimes managers are called managers, sometimes they're called a dozen different things. But generally speaking, there's something that's considered to be managerial, or considered to be professionally a certified position. That's something that's going to be represented by our bargaining unit. It includes people you might see at City Hall, some of our outlying departments, like I work in the street department. You also have some people in fire and police that are under our umbrella of representation. One of the, kind of, unique things about us is that we're unaffiliated. So, some of the bargaining units, they had that national affiliation, gives us some good independent control over what we do, which we like. You know, we're, we're basically at the discretion of our members to decide our paths forward and what sorts of priorities we have as a bargaining unit group. An important distinction that you'll maybe grow to be aware of is that we have two different groups that comprise the MMP bargaining units. We have an MMPA group, which is our at-will civil service employed people. These are people that have taken civil service tests, have been, their name has been given on a list to a hiring manager, and then they've been hired. And then there's our classified employees, which are generally the people that you may be doing part of the share of appointing. So, you'll get those mayoral recommendations, and then you'll vote for the approval or non-approval of those positions. So, very similar as far as the terms of employment that those two groups have, although there are some distinctions between the two.
Hey, John?
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick?
Of course.
Quick question, because this always, this confuses me. So, when we talk about MMPA and MMPB?
Correct.
They have different insurance, they have different, is it this, so they have?
There's a lot of overlap with things like insurance benefits. There are some, so with our A group, they tend to historically, you know, they serve at will. So, there's some of the civil service protections that they're not entitled to. So, for that reason, there are some additional benefits they may have, things like leave entitlements.
But there are similarities.
Yeah. Definitely more similarities than differences between the two groups, as far as their benefit for being a city employee.
Thanks.
Not a problem. As far as the scale of the MMP represented portion of the workforce, we have about 350 employees, as far as the positions budgeted in the city goes. That's about 16% of the city workforce. And then, I'm not going to read all these off to you, but these are our, kind of, leadership folks here, so you can see our president, Samantha Johnson, Dave, myself, and the presidential inclusive position titles there. We also have a board of directors that helps oversee our operations. So, generally, these are the people that are going to be making the larger picture decisions. When something like a contract comes around, the ratification of that contract, of course, goes to all of our members, but some of the more segmented decisions that we make, this is the group that'll be making those decisions for the most part. And now, I'll turn this over to Dave here to go through some more background on some things currently facing us.
Morning, Council. I'm Dave Kocat. I'm the past president of the MMP Association. I had that position for five years. And I'm also the fire protection engineer for the Spokane Fire Department. So, I'm here to talk to you about some of the other side of things that's going on with MMP. As you already heard a little bit, we are unaffiliated, we're on our own, we're a volunteer group, trying to do what a union can do, we're more of association. So, we do have some challenges that we deal with on a regular basis. Some of these challenges have increased over the past couple of years. We want to be able to share those with you, give you some statistical information that actually surprised us as well, too. One of those has happened to be how many vacancies the city has. And currently, there are, well, previously, there were 285. There were actually more than that since we put together this slide. We didn't have an updated report for that. That's a pretty significant amount. Out of that, 25% of the vacancies are MMP. Now, I mentioned earlier that the employee percentage is 16%. So, there are more MMPs vacant positions than there actually are in some of the other labor units. Pretty different. So, the things that we also run into is, most of our MMP employees tend to do more than one job. They're basically covering for somebody that's a position that's been vacated, or position is somebody has gone, somebody else to cover for that. It usually falls upon MMP to be able to deal with the management and the supervising and things like that. So, it's pretty common, you'll find an MMP person that's doing more than one job in a department. So, some of the things that we've, and a big example of that is CHHS. There was basically a employee burnout in that department, and we saw a mass evacuation of that. We have also seen evacuations of other areas with people leaving the city for a number of reasons. So, we're going to go through some more of those that we have been able to kind of glean from the stuff that occurs. But some of the other things that we have issues with is we also have trouble getting those positions filled. We have a hard time with a couple of things. One of those is teleworking has become a common practice in industry. It is not common practice for the city of Spokane. It is allowed, but there's, basically, we have had and heard from some positions that we've had to be filled, that lists of candidates has been reduced significantly when they found out they couldn't telework. So, we had a potential of having some good qualified employees, we couldn't bring them on for that. Another thing that's been very challenging is the lack of competitive salaries with other government agencies and other governments as well. It used to be that if somebody was coming, wanting to go work for someplace in this area, they came to work for the city of Spokane. Now, they're going to work for the county, or even in a private industry, such as Avista. So, those are some of our challenges. Well, I'm going to specifically talk about salary changes, because I understand you'll be talking about some budget stuff later in this meeting, so I'll be able to kind of address some of the concerns, the things that we run into. Like most positions in the city, all MMPs have six steps. So, usually, you're hired at step one, and as you progress up, you go up to the final step. But what we found is from, even in 2021, we were seeing that there was very little use of step one and step two. There was more, step two actually did have some more use, but in 2022, more positions were being hired at step three rather than step one or two. So, it's a trend that we're seeing. It's one of the proposals we have for our contract. I'll be talking about our contract a little bit.
Just to clarify, so this is not how many people are in those steps. This is new hires coming in at a higher than step one, as a new hire.
Correct. So, there's 18% for this year that come in at step one, but yet, for step three, 35% are coming in at that level. So, the first two steps effectively aren't utilized as well as they should be. So, it's an indication that we do have some salary concerns. So, wage compression is also another problem, as well as overtime. Most of our members are salaried, and that's, our primary goal is that we stay salaried. We have a proposal actually to make all of our positions salaried, because we do have some hourly employees in our labor units. That makes it very challenging, because we're already negotiating two contracts, now we're going to have to negotiate within the contracts, different levels of employment status. So, we're trying to get that taken care of. One of the things that's happened recurrently is 270 compression. If you're in 270, the basic idea is you would want to move up, and then move up to the manager position of that department or division. In many cases, you're taking either a salary cut, because you don't get overtime, or you're going to get paid less than a dollar an hour more than what you're currently making in the position that you're in. It's too close. There is no incentive to have people promote up, and it becomes more of a challenge, as we also deal with trying to recruit people from outside of the city. Another thing that hit us, and this is kind of an interesting one that we didn't expect, the legislature passed an eight-year program to bring salary positions in line with what the industries were seeing for salaries. And by doing that, what they were requiring is you either increase the salaries, so this is a state telling the jurisdictions, the cities, counties, and everybody, you're paying people too less. So, we want, if you're not paying them a certain level, then they're going to turn hourly so they can get overtime, and their pay can increase. We have actually seen that. The first year that bill came out, we had 11 people that went through that situation. Big story behind that, I won't bore you with that, but we have continued issues with that. And we're going to have continuation with that up until 2028. That kind of surprised us, so we spent some time talking to some of the other jurisdictions who said, "Well, do you guys have a problem with this?" Because we're having a problem. Every year, we're getting five, 10 people that are going to be changed from salary to hourly. And the response was, "No, we don't have a problem. We raised the salary, so they don't have to deal with it." So, that's just something to consider. Of course, the biggest issue we're seeing right now is economic impact. The economy is just crazy. Cost of living has gone up, the CPI, which a lot of things are based off of, is around 8.8% to 9%. It is just insane. So, it's harder for even our members. I don't believe we have anybody living out of their cars yet, but I have a feeling it's going to come pretty close if things continue the way that they are. So, I know I've heard some 270 people say, "Yeah, they can't afford apartments, so they'll be in their car." We're not there yet, but we're darn close. So, let's talk about contract negotiations. Just so, I think you've seen a lot of contracts coming through. I think ours is probably the last one of the major contracts that are going through. Our contract expired the end of last year, and so we made an effort in March of last year to basically say, "So, we get something going with the city, get things moving forward in the contracts." Of course, all the contracts were being negotiated at that time. So, in May of last year, we proposed, "Can we get a one-year extension?" And we put the, this is, there is no negotiation with this, it wasn't under negotiation, so all this information is public. We asked for a 3% increase. I think that you're pretty well aware that all the other, all the other labor units received more than 3.5% increase for 2021, or close to that, and much, and more in 2022. Well, what we were told was that they needed more time to do some evaluation to see if that would work. They were concerned about some funding as well, and we didn't hear anything. We kept asking about the situation until we finally had to file an unfair labor practice. That's something we do not like doing. We absolutely despise doing it, but we had to get the city's attention. The PERC reviewed the ruling, reviewed the complaint, found that it was in our, it was pointed to our favor, that we were correct, that this was a failure to negotiate with the labor unit. And our contract expired the end of the year. So, in February, we received a what-if, and I'm not going to call it a proposal, because we're not under negotiations, but we received a package. There's a few of the items that are up there, I don't necessarily want to go through each one of those, but it was basically something, there was no way that we felt that that was going to address any of the concerns that we have. It's not going to address the compression with 270, it's not going to address the low salaries. It's basically going to give a token increase in salary for the members that have been doing so much work. So, basically, the key thing that we were concerned about was, we were told that City Council had reviewed that. And that was actually in a response to one of the ULP questions, that we were told it was going to, that our what-if proposal was going to be presented to Council, Council once approved it, the city would be brought to us, and we'd be able to negotiate that. Well, that kind of concerned us quite a bit. We actually talked to a couple of council members and said, "Is this true?" That was very unnerving to hear that that would be negotiation without, using us in the negotiations. So, real challenging. We rejected the what-if, basically just didn't respond to it, it wasn't worth it, it wasn't even, it wasn't even worth considering, it shouldn't have, should not have been put on the table. So, we did begin formal negotiations, and we are currently under formal negotiations. We are using private closed meetings for it, but you will find both the city's proposals, and our proposals are also published for our members. We have put those out publicly to let people know what's going on. So, our biggest concerns with all this is MMP is, we don't have the power, we don't have the might. We are spending an awful lot of money on our attorney to be able to keep up with the city, to be able to make sure that our contract is being met. So, we wanted to be able to inform you of that, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Cathcart. Well, I guess my question is really more for the Council President, and I'm wondering, you know, when we were debating or discussing the 29, the 270, the Guild contracts, we didn't really have a formal presentation from those unions to talk about their concerns. So, I guess, what's different about this contract, and as to why we're having that conversation?
I think they just made a request to be on our agenda, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would add that, if you've noticed, in the last probably year and a half, I've tried to set up council members to meet with some of these groups to just, to understand what employees are going through.
Yeah.
And we've done that with local 270, and we've done that with MMP. When this came up, one of my issues was, these are people that we deal with every day, that we work with, directors, professional staff, and these issues don't come up very often as a group. So, I invited them to come and kind of share what their concerns are, and what's kind of been building that's leading to this kind of unfortunate culture within the MMP group. So, I asked them to do an update, and who they are, what their issues, what their concerns are, so that hopefully, when we look at budgets and we start looking, when we approve positions, we can ask ourselves some questions. And the one thing I wanted to add, where this got important to me, was running into employees, MMP employees, who were, had been at the city, who were working two years, and they had a certain salary, and then a new person's hired sitting next to them, who's a brand-new employee, but has been hired making more than them doing the same job. And so, those were some of the issues that we kind of talked about throughout the last few years, and also out-of-grade, how much money is going out the door in, do you want to talk about out-of-grade? Because that's a, that's a, that's an interesting issue, and I, I've worked on it, I've looked at it for, what, two, three years, and I don't know how we fix that, but it's expensive.
And I'd love to hear more. Real quick, so my only reason in bringing that up is I just want to make sure that we're treating each bargaining unit the same, no special or different treatment for each one. So, that's my only concern there. And I think, I mean, great information, and I would love to have had the same presentation from all those different union groups.
But we did have, we did set up meetings with Joe Kavanaugh, met with several, we had that opportunity as well.
But again, private meetings, this is a public one, that's just the difference. I just think it's great to have this information out publicly, so people can understand.
Well, they were just glassed in the chute.
And that's, and that's why I'm such a proponent of open bargaining, because I want the public to have the opportunity to see all of this type of information, that for the other union groups was all in excess.
Yeah.
So, I just think it's, it's nice to have this publicly, and that's just a point I wanted to bring up.
Yeah. Anyway, will you talk about out-of-grade real quick to make me feel better?
Yeah. Out-of-grade's an interesting, we do have that in our contract negotiations. We have a, out-of-grade is defined in the civil service rules, it's also defined in our contract. There tends to be a variance to that that allows a lot of other things to occur, and you can find that out-of-grade positions have been out of grade for over two years. And the intent of out-of-grade is somebody is covering the position until a position is filled. So, and what we've also found out is, some of the people that are in the out-of-grade position may not actually be qualified to have that position, but that they're most senior to be able to be moved up to the out-of-grade. So, there's a lot of question as to why is this out-of-grade taking so long? It is used sometimes as a promotional aspect, which that's not the intent of it. The intent of out-of-grade is, a position has been vacated for a short period of time, or vacated totally, that somebody has to step in and take those duties. Another thing that we've seen as well is that when somebody has moved up into that position, there's actually been a collective understanding on the administration side, "Well, we're only going to pay them for the number of hours they're covering that position, otherwise they're maintaining their salary." From our different standpoint, if you're going to be a manager, you're a manager full-time. You're in that position the whole time that you're, you're sitting at that desk, you're taking that position. So, we've had some difficulties with that. I know that there was a council proposal for an ordinance a couple of years ago, and we are, we have re-looked at that, and we're going to be hopefully bringing that back to Council, recommending that go back to Council to consider handling the out-of-grade so that we don't have some of these situations that cause us to provide, to submit grievances, or cause us to file unfair labor practices. We should have the same process, we should have a simple process that everybody understands.
And if I understand, the out-of-grade issue is, it allows people to bypass the civil service qualification lens.
That is correct.
And so, that's, not that it is in every case, but that's the concern.
Just follow the rules. The people don't necessarily have to be qualified at that position, they just have to meet their civil service rules to be appointed to that. So, it's hire the list, seniority, whatever, there's other things that are done to determine that. But, yeah, it doesn't go through civil service.
Other questions or concerns? I will note the, you know, public bargaining piece is controversial out there, but it seems like your bargaining unit has, by coming here and by posting all the offers and agreeing to do that as part of your negotiations, but voluntarily, you weren't coerced into doing.
Correct.
You've come closer to any other unit to comply with that.
Yeah, we felt it was reasonable, at this point, we understand where things are at. It's also, it's also important for our members, they don't get to see things as well. So, when they were able to see all the proposals ahead of time, they know where we're starting from, they know where the city's coming from. This is the third contract that I've negotiated with MMP, and it's, it is a very trying, frustrating, physically demanding activity. And I will commend that currently, the city's negotiator is actually from Summit Law, not from HR. As I say, the meetings have gone very well. They're much more controlled, there's no emotion, there's more of understanding and communication, and we look forward to that continuing throughout the negotiations.
That's good feedback. Councilmember Streton.
And I would just last offer that I would love to have, we've started with civil service, to bring civil service quarterly before council, just to do some updates. HR, when that gets reorganized, I want to do that as well. And if council's interested, I'm happy to help set up quarterly updates with these groups, to just come in and check in and make that connection, because I know sometimes we don't make the connection. So, if there's an interest there, let me know, and we can move forward with that. And that would include all of them, we just bring them in quarterly.
Great. All right. Thanks so much, and give our best to Samantha, who couldn't be here today. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right. So, we're going to do ARPA first before budget, and so Matt and Michelle, I think, are going to work with us on that. And I'll turn it over to them, but I know we're going to get a little bit of an update on the childcare RFP, and then a broader update on this neighborly portal that people are going to be able to use to apply for things.
Right. Thank you. So, just a quick, high-level update on the childcare RFP. The only change that we had, we're just bringing it back to council so that you hear it, the only change that we're doing is something that we already discussed. It's so that we're managing it in-house, so we're saving some of those monies, some of those administrative dollars that would be charged to the grant if it weren't for managing it in-house. That being said, we've, we've had interviews last week. I think there's some good candidates being identified, but I'll let Michelle talk on that, and then also talk about the neighborly process that we're moving all of these grant applications towards. It's a pretty intuitive process, and it's kind of a paint-by-numbers that should be helpful for all of the applicants, whether dealing with the city in the past, dealing with the county, because the county uses this, or just new to applying, period.
So, I'm very excited to show this to you today. We've been working very, very hard on it, and I'm using the childcare as an example. This is what the participant portal looks like from the participant's side. So, at some point in time, when we have more than one of these open, they'll have a full list of everything that they can apply for, and little blurbs of saying, "This one happens to be incorrect, because it did not get changed," and I did not see that, because this says it's for qualified organizations. But I will update that to be what Matt just said about going to individual childcare providers. And so, you'll see that this is an option to click on, and you would just start a new application, and then you type in your organization name. And then it just takes you through the application process. And here, the first page, it will tell you the whole entire overview of the program, it will tell you the minimum qualifications, and here, there's a click here where you can see the whole RFP in a Word document, if it's something that you want to print out, look at for reference, and then you would just read through all that, complete that, And then it just takes you through the application and asks you all the questions. "Are you a licensed daycare?" Yes. It will ask you to provide your daycare license. You can, has the organization been debarred? Yes. Stop. You don't, you can, don't qualify, because you've been debarred to, to receive federal funds. And then I, I can't go past this stuff without... Oops. I don't have documents to upload, it's not going to let me go further. I'm sorry. Do you have the city's Spokane business license? If I click yes, it asks you to provide the business license. If I click no, it says, please note that your organization will be required to have this in order to sign a contract. Can you prove insurance? Same thing. If you don't have it, you have to provide it. Is the organization currently certified with the state of Washington? Yes. Provide your certification. No? Then it tell, then it tells, it should tell you that you should provide it. Organizational name, principal place of business. Anyway, it just walks you through the whole RFP, asks if you're registered with SAM.gov, if you're registered with SAM.gov, you provide your UEI number and your documentation, federal identification number, just everything that they need to do to qualify for this RFP. And in the end, I apologize, because I'm from the, I'm in at the participant, and I can't get past this window without uploading documentation, and I did not think of that. I apologize. So, but it takes you through the whole entire process, and then at the end, there's like five or six certifications stating that based on this, RFP doesn't require the city to engage in a contract, that you will supply the city with a conflict of interest statement or in writing, any potential conflict of interest, just a whole bunch of certifications and the terms and conditions of the contract and the terms and conditions of the ARPA contract, or ARPA fund, federal funds. And it basically covers all of our bases from A to Z, and then we have all the documentation once the, the application is submitted, and we shouldn't have to ask for any further, further information.
So, so Michelle, this is the industry standard, this format that we're going to neighborly. Is that used in other municipalities surrounding the city or?
I'm not going to say that it's an industry standard, it's what we chose. The county does use neighborly for their CHHS grants and stuff like that, so that most, some of the providers that are out there are familiar with neighborly and have used neighborly before. It's very intuitive, it's very easy to use. It's just a portal address, it gives everything that the city has to offer if we go through the system and, and build it through the system.
So I guess my question is, if somebody goes through all this, they provide all the information, everything, they never get to a point that says, you know, no, stop, you can't continue, does that essentially mean they're going to qualify? And, and, and then if, if so, what's the, what's the process for getting ahold of them and letting them know what, what they've qualified for and how that, how does that work?
So once they've submitted the application, it basically means that they've hit all the boxes, checked all the boxes, that they should qualify unless somebody that's reviewing something finds some kind of discrepancy in what they reported versus what is on paper. You know, some things can happen. But we'll go through the grading, so we'll print off all the applications and we'll go through the grading and just go through a regular award process-
Okay.
-and scoring.
And then, but, but how, I guess in terms of somebody applies tomorrow, how quickly will somebody get back to them to let them know the status or what the process is?
So from the administration side of this, I can go in and say, click it, that it's been submitted, yes, yes, it's been received, yes, it's eligible, yes, it's been awarded, and they can log back in and see-
So they can see-
...the status of their application as it goes through the system.
Perfect. Okay, that's great.
What's like a typical timeline then? Because I'm assuming those steps have, have, you know, time in between them for, for us to click those things so that they can see where they're at in the process. What would be like a standard timeline for people to go through?
Well, hopefully when we get these new staff people that we brought on board, we'll have a lot more time to dedicate to this. But we were going, we were, need to discuss how long we're going to leave the applications open, because we have three of them ready to go, childcare, pre-apprenticeship, and eviction defense. I want to stagger them just a little bit by days, maybe 10 or 15 days on closing them, so we'll choose which one to open and close, open and close, open and close. And then once we get the, all the documents, then it's just basically powerhouse of sitting down, printing everything out, doing, going through the scoring and moving everybody through the system.
Just, I had a pitch for the eviction defense and pre-apprenticeship, just because those are going to be a small number of people applying, maybe get those ones.
I'm hoping to have the everything out by next week.
Yeah.
And Matt and I discussed, I think, keeping the apprenticeship 30 days and then the other one like 45.
Yeah. Yep. So this is really exciting, actually, because the, the city's going to a whole new level. And I just want to commend you, Michelle, particularly-
Thank you.
...for your vision and work on this. So, thanks for doing that, and hopefully you'll get those people hired, so it's not you reviewing them.
Oops, sorry.
So just to piggyback off of a little bit what she was saying and, and the question that was asked, so right now, we're, we're tentatively planning that the, that the childcare application were, were to be open for, I think we said-
Sixty.
Sixty? I thought we were doing, I thought we were doing eviction defense for sixty, because that was going to be a bit longer, because there wasn't that many applicants that we thought of.
I thought he said shorter, because there's not that-
So I was like, on eviction and pre-apprenticeship, there's only a few potential applicants for that.
Okay.
Because those are service providers as opposed to retail.
Absolutely, yeah. The, the only, the, the thought behind the childcare being a, a bit sooner was to get some of those dollars out, as much of those dollars, or at least the award notices out before school starts.
Well, I was just, my, my only thing was-
Or at school start.
-if it's a capacity issue, I thought you'd do those small ones-
Got it.
Get them-
Got it. Yeah, I mean, we're still going to have to have a scoring committee on each one, just like we were to do a regular RFP. So there's going to be a scoring committee of at, at least three, I think it is, at least three for, for each scoring committee. We'll have to stagger them out, but the, like you said, the scoring windows can be pretty small at that point in time, once, once we've closed it, especially for pre-apprenticeship and eviction defense, because I think you're right. I, I mean, based on the, the feedback that I've heard, there's only a few that are out there.
Right. But can more than one neighborly be going at a time? I guess that's the question.
So the, the three can tentatively be going at the exact same time. And then we have cultural events, the, the one that has already closed for 2022, that's being backfilled right now, because this is a, kind of a soup-to-nuts type system, where it, you, you put it in, you put it in within the application, and then you're doing your draws out of that, you're doing your con, you know, your information flows to the contract, and then you're pulling your draws out, and that's where you're doing your reporting. So it helps the new employees as well.
Any more ARPA questions?
Okay, so they check all the boxes, they are notified that they do actually qualify, then that moves on to the RFP process.
Mm-hmm.
And then the actual awards or recommendation of awards are made then.
After the scoring, correct.
After the scoring.
Yeah.
Because I don't want people to think just because they qualified that-
Right.
...it really guarantees some funding.
Right. It's still a competitive process, and so it, it will have to be scored, and, and we can talk about some sort of communication that will go out once we get to that scoring process to let, to let individuals know or organizations know that that's what's happening.
Is, is it very clear in the language that just because you qualify through this, this worksheet, that you're not guaranteed an award?
It is a certification at the end that they have to check stating that they understand that the Spokane city, Spokane is not under obligation to contract based on this RFP.
Okay.
And to answer your question, the document that was referenced on the very first screen is the full RFP, says the scoring, says the rating and everything, and it's in that document.
Okay, cool. That's great. All right. Thank you. Going to a whole new level, just, just-
And then just really quick to, to kind of give the group a high-level overview of where we're at with the ARPA process of, of after we voted on tranche three. We had a great meeting the other day talking about cultural centers as well as neighborhood business districts, and we're having representation from each of the districts on both of the committees that we're at right now. I think that's going to have great progress. We're, we're going, we're planning on having those, those individuals that are starting under Michelle to be in on those meetings and to kind of help guide those things along. But right now, there was a lot of great conversation that was happening. I know there has been administrative leads that have been identified that are going to be part of that process. The next step for neighborly at this point in time is, is getting the not-for-profit and the small business awards into the neighborly process and kind of stack, because it's about a four-to-six-week process at best. So, so as we, we are developing the parameters, it's being fed into neighborly as well at the, at, at the same time. Any more on ARPA?
No.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thanks. Let's move to budget overview.
Grazie.
Part one.
Discussion, part one. All right. Hey, Matt, can you go share? Oh, yeah.
So prospective budget overview discussion. It's a pretty broad term, and we're talking about it now. Kind of, the, the question is, is why am I up here versus the CFO, or why are we kind of talking about this before we're actually talking about the 2023 budget? Really, the answer there is, is we have a lot of 2022 asks as it is, that feed into the 2023 budget as, as we're developing both the, the end plan for getting through 2022 as well as the future plan for 2023 and beyond. There's been a lot of questions asked, concerns of, of looking at things holistically. We, we've heard a lot, meaning the council has heard a lot of requests that have been piecemealed in, and the finance committee had requested that I kind of have a, a two-part, or at least two-part discussion of what are all the asks that we're seeing? What is going to impact the 2022 year? How are we going to pay for those asks? And then how does that flow into the 2023 year? So that is what I'm doing here today. It, it's not going to be 45 minutes, it's going to be a lot quicker than 45 minutes, because it is going to get broken up into two conversations. I didn't want to totally overwhelm the group. That said, wanted to start off with 2022 highlights. So starting off, you know, 2021 converted into really strong unallocated reserves, and that's been relayed to you by the CFO. Really, where that landed was our sales tax revenue. There was, there was a great recovery that came out of COVID. The, the year-over-year sales tax revenue from 20 to 22 was some of the biggest jumps that we've seen in the past 20 years. In fact, they were the biggest jumps that we've seen in the past 20 years. Invariably, that would be, you know, what would happen, coming into not a recession, but a, a pandemic, and then out of the pandemic, but large, large growth. Currently, year-to-date, we're about 6% above prior year in just sales tax, which is, which is doing well. We are slowing down, though. You know, we, we've hit a, prior year, we were hitting double-digit increases year-over-year every month. Now we are down to low, single-digit increases year-over-year. So, so that, that slowdown is definitely either here or on our doorstep. Again, going back to ARPA, this is kind of just talking about how we've allocated about $67.5 million for internal and external needs. We chose to manage subrecipient grant awards internally, which is invariably going to provide millions in additional funding to COVID relief needs that are outside of the community as well as inside of the city. Approximately 13.5 in relief is unallocated currently. That's, that's after tranche three. That is, that, there's no, there's, there's no definite plan on, on what, what is going to be had with that. The ARPA subcommittee is continuing conversations on what the next steps are on that, but no, nothing definite at this point in time. Of which, 17.5, and I apologize, that, that number is a little bit skewed, of which there is a, a large revenue replacement capacity remaining. That, the 17.5 is intentionally above the actual 13.5, and the 17.5 is actually closer to 26 million. But that is, and this is a little bit difficult to, to define here, the 27 million, we, we have up to 37 million in revenue, in revenue replacement that we can, we can support to the Department of Treasury. As you all remember, revenue replacement, if we log it into revenue replacement, it is the least restrictive, so we can spend it on really a lot, a lot of different options that don't fit within, nicely within the seven categories within the Department of Treasury. So it gives us a little bit of broad spectrum if we loop those things into those categories, even allocations that we've already made. If we have them a little bit tricky and we're saying, hey, you know, we don't know if this is going to be eligible, if we don't want to fight that fight, we can easily just put them into the revenue replacement category because we have that large revenue replacement allocation. We got very lucky on that, on that, that calculation from the feds. It, it's a, it's a gracious allocation, because it's looking at your, your three-year increase, and we were doing really, really well going into the, the pandemic. Moving forward, another, another couple of great highlights that we can, we can chalk up for, for this year so far is the, the public safety capital purchases that not only have we committed to for 2022, but also the, the pre-purchase approval that we've made for 3.1 million for 2023. Those were much-needed vehicles for both police and fire. And then again, moving into the bargaining agreements, we heard a little bit about it before, but we have, we've passed the hurdle of finishing our, three of our biggest bargaining agreements, Local 270 being the biggest, historic pay, pay raises for our employees that have been with us historically over this past several years, especially during the COVID times that were on the line every single day.
Hey, Matt?
Yeah?
Question on, so 6.1 million police-fire capital purchases made. My understanding was they didn't actually make a number of those purchases.
You're correct, you're correct. So there, there are purchases that have, they've entered into a purchase agreement with those purchases for the fir, for the, both the police, the police, well, the police cars not-
I thought they didn't even do that.
They, they have not. You're right. I am sorry. That, that is something that I'll update on that. They have not because of, they, they attempted to, but were not able to, because they weren't able to get the, the inventory. You're absolutely correct. Fire was able to, though. And then moving forward, we're going to talk about the budget challenges, and that's, that's really what I was talking about as, as the preface of the, the 2023 budget season conversations, as well as getting us through to the end of the year. There's really three levels in, from my viewpoint, and this isn't supposed to be all-encompassing. I know there's other requests that are coming through with different departments through administration. This is just kind of what is being universally talked about within the city, and I wanted to present them as, as a holistic view to the city council. Level one first is approved by a city council in current year, and, and I'll go into detail on that. There's about 12 and a quarter million there. Level two is pending needs. It's things that are, that are really on the horizon, about nine to 10 million there. And level three is the organizational requests, requests that are coming from, I, I believe, different departments through the administration and that the administration has provided us. Really, right now, what I have is the, the ARPA request, and that's, that's really what I can look at from, this is the most current set of requests that are not actually definite needs, but, but are, but are on the wish list. So level one budget challenges, moving into this, so this is, again, approved by city council in current year. There's about 12 and a quarter in unidentified funding. Unidentified funding, just so everybody knows, is not that there is no funding that's there. It's, it, it just has not been looped into a bucket yet, and that's going to be part of our next exercise, the next time I present, is just saying, okay, now that we know there are expenses here, now that we know there are resources here, let's start doing the hard work of putting the expenses into the buckets that, of revenues that we can say that are there. So first and foremost, as, as great as the collective bargaining agreements are, the accomplishments that we, that we crossed on those, they obviously have a fiscal cost that come along with them, and it's a large fiscal cost. I'm not sure if, I, I think some of the council members that were here last year remember when Tim Donovan and I were working on the budget, we were, we were saying that the, that invariably probably what we're going to see is about a $9 million hit. We ended up saving, down below, you can see that we, that, that both the administration and council had looped into the budget about $2.5 million for salaries, for bargaining agreements that were going to be paid out in 2022. But as you can see the numbers, the $2.4 million ad to pay, of which has been funded by ARPA, but the 1.7 million, the 3.4 million, the, the 4.1 million, and the 2.3 million, get us to a number that in nowhere is, is it funded completely. So while we did have about 2, $2.5 million in savings or in budget that we, we held on to, that we were going to allocate to these bargaining agreements, we're not quite there. We're still at about a $10 million- We're still at about a $10 million hit in an unfunded need. This obviously includes, as you can see, the PDA's retro payment. This is an approximate number. They're, they're still kind of dealing with the, the allocation and the allotment of, of what, what PDA is getting what. But that's, that's just to throw it on there, just so it's on all of our horizon.
Matt, before you leave, on the 270, the 2.4 million ad to pay, that came out of ARPA.
That did, correct.
So that's, is that in your 12 and a quarter?
That's the funded, it is not in the 12 and a quarter. No, that is, and, and I probably should have made that a little bit clearer. But the 1.7, the 3.4, the 4.1 and the 2.3 are included, and the 750 down below are included in the, in the two and a quarter, or 12 and a quarter, I'm sorry. But then again.
And this isn't overtime either?
This is not overtime. This is just bargaining agreements solely. This is just what we have signed recently. We'll get to overtime shortly.
Can you say again, what was the difference between unidentified and unfunded need?
Yeah, so unidentified, unidentified, so funded on this one is, I mean, they, really, they can, they can be used pretty interchangeably here. Unidentified funding up above is, there is, there is a need for the 12 and a quarter that, that fund. We, we do have the money. If, I mean, if that was all that we had to pay for, we could pay for that, whether it be through ARPA, whether it be through unallocated reserves, whether it be through, you know, whatever it is, we, we have the money to pay for it. Whereas the unfunded is, is similar to that. And it's just, it's just an interchangeable word, I would say.
But the dollar amounts are different?
1.7?
Well, the 9.8 and 12 and a quarter.
Then, so the nine, oh, I'm sorry, the 9.8 down at the, down at the bottom. So the 9.8 takes into account the 1.5 million and the 950,000 that we saved going into the 2022 budget season. So those were written directly into the budget. Now, level two challenges. So this is the next step of need from, from my point of view. It's about nine to 10 million in unidentified, unidentified funding. While they're awaiting approval, there, there are needs that are kind of being talked about with both council and administration, that they are really pending from my, my perspective. First and foremost is obviously going to be the homeless operation. We're, we're talking about Trent Operations, that's $2.5 million. We had a, a presentation from both Tanya Wallace as well as John Hall yesterday, or Mon-, was it Monday? Monday.
That, that's just for the next four months.
That's just for the next four months. The, on top of it is $5.8 million. So that, that doesn't even take into account the 2023 impact that we're going to be facing. And that's going to be part of these next conversations as well. As now that, because once we accomplish 2022, it's, it's a microcosm compared to how that's going to impact the 2023. If we deplete the reserves, there is going to be no forward-looking movement on, on these sort of incentives that are out there because there is no money for it, as I think you mentioned the other day.
So Matt, just clarity, these numbers just get us through 2022?
That's correct, that's correct.
One more quick clarification on here. So fire overtime this year is going to be $9.7 million is the projected number. We had 3.1 that was allocated for overtime in the budget. There was two more numbers and I, I see the 3.4 here. I'm trying to remember where that other 3.2 is.
So, so there's a, a public safety personnel fund through a levy that is, that is paying for firefighters. While they're not, while the, the fire department is not 100% fully staffed, we're still providing that same level of service to the city of Spokane. So while those vacancies are within that public safety personnel, we are pulling those savings to cover up the overtime.
So that's salary savings that we're, we're putting into that?
Yeah, theoretically, yes. That's, that's exactly what we're doing. And then we're, we're also saving money on.
It's more than salary, it's double. You get the salary savings and then we have this money set aside as well to cover those positions. Because you're not paying.
So you're, so let's just use really rough numbers. So the public safety personnel covers both police and fire and a, and a bit of the municipal justice, the municipal justice center, or not justice center, the municipal department. So let's just say for rough numbers that each police and fire both get $5 million and, or $2 million. And police, the, the fire department gets 20 positions with those, those $2 million. $100,000 a position, right? Well, they are going to be staffing those 20 positions based on what is in the collective bargaining agreement right now. So those 20 firefighters, while be, while they are vacant, they are, they are still being worked by individuals that are within the organization. So that $2 million is just going into the, those, those personnel costs of $3 million if we're using again, rough numbers of time and a half for overtime. The $2 million of the $3 million cost is getting dedicated to the, the public safety personnel cost. Does that make sense for everybody? Okay. So there was, I, I think there was a larger overtime number that was projected earlier on. I know that some of the fire overtime has already been charged to the public safety personnel. I know that the, the 3.4 is the SBO that we most recently saw from Tanya Wallace on, on Monday. So I, based on what she has presented, as well as the assessment that, that we've been doing over the year, that, that seems to be a pretty realistic number of, of getting us through to the end of the year. Again, M&amp;P union negotiations, we just heard from them. We don't know what that impact is going to be. They have an expired contract. Invariably, it's going to happen. It most likely is going to be, you know, within the year, I would, I would assume, but I don't know. If not, we're looking again at pushing that can into 2023. And then we have level three budget challenges. And so this is what we received from the mayor's ARPA priorities on July 20th, 2022, just a few months, or just last month, I guess. Starting off, labor agreements, we know we've already approved that, so let's just take that out. We were told that the, the yellow is, the highlighted yellow is top priorities of the mayors at this point in time. So the 2.4 million, we know that we have approved for that. That is the ad to pay that's going out to local 270. The administration on that, the 1.3 million, we approved 350,000. That's for the new positions underneath Michelle. That is, that is thought to be able to cover the entirety of the administration needed to sunset the, the grants going out. The public safety equipment, $7 million on that. We, we've heard numbers that, that the 2022, that the 2022 funding approval that we've done via the SBOs was not enough. And so not only is that 7 million, I think, projected for future years, it's also to say, hey, we didn't buy enough in 2022 and therefore that is their need. The Spokane utility assistance, there's been a lot of discussion about that. Currently, based on the, based on Marlene and, and the utility department's calculation, there's anywhere from $5 to $8 million that's past due. The $5 million would be needed to go out to the customers to get them current. There's discussions on whether to, you know, where exactly to fund that. It doesn't necessarily, just because these are on the ARPA board doesn't mean they have to actually come from ARPA if that's what the council decides to pull them from a different bucket. Park and fund solvency, this is going to have to do with the balloon payment on the debt that they're talking about, that they're, they're going to need based on a loss in revenue. Though Council President Beggs has talked a handful of times about the need to increase the rates and the approval that the council had made subsequent, or prior to, prior to this request. And I think it was coming out of COVID, correct? That, that you made that, that the council made that approval?
We approved it, I'm thinking it was before COVID. We gave the administration the ability to raise the rates based on market demand. So not because we need the money, but just market demand of, of, of it.
Correct, correct. That's right. And so that, those rates have not, yes.
Well, so, but the, the debt that you're talking about, is that the, the settlement, the legal settlement?
River Park Square.
Yep.
Okay, so we're still, that's, that's what the 850 specifically, it's not actually for parking so much as it is for.
If, if it were to come out of there, I, I think it would cripple the, the actual fund. Is, is the, is the discussion being had?
It's in the parking fund. I think we, there's two issues. I think we pay about $2 million a year of debt service out of the parking fund. So if we weren't doing that, parking fund would be fine. But in addition, I'm not sure what year, but there's a year that we have to pay it off in a balloon payment with even more money. I'm not sure.
I believe that's 2024 is the year. And then I, I think we are, based on the conversations I had with Michelle this morning, I think we're taking on 1.2 million in debt for the financing of the, the replacement of the kiosks. And I think that's, that's the other piece of that. The homelessness support, the $10 million there, that is, I'm not entirely sure if that is looped into the overall plan of what is happening. I know there's been conversations between Catholic Charities 2.0, as well as this just assisting our, our, our basic needs within the city. I'm not quite sure what approach that is. But I'm, I'm sure administration could give you more clarification when they're going to come in, in future meetings. And then again, the following are requests that they had made that not necessarily on their top priority listing, but still a priority to all of them. The 3 million on the very bottom, the community center investments, we allocated 1.5. So we, we agreed there. And then the labor agreements one time, that is, that is represented elsewhere. So it's not necessarily, it's still a need, but it's not, you don't need to duplicate the need.
So Matt, were these, so are these specific requests of the administration, like from ARPA or, or something else? Because like, I don't, 500,000 for scholarships? I, I'm not really sure what that even is.
These, these were specific requests from administration when the mayor presented to council, I believe.
Mid-June.
Mid-June, yes, before tranche three. So, so this overall amount was, was the request.
But we're sure that, that this isn't, that that comma's in the right spot and that wasn't 5 million from ARPA for the education stuff that we're talking about. I just want to be certain that this is a separate thing for a half a million.
I'm fairly positive, but I'm not going to.
Yeah, that was taken off our list.
Yep. So that's where we're at. We're looking at, at the very bare bones minimum of priority needing approximately 23 million in unfunded priorities. And that's the homelessness support, the Spokane utility assistance and the public safety equipment, all of which I, I've heard from council is a priority to some degree of almost all council members. So it's kind of saying, okay, well, you know, where's that discussion of, of how we lay that into it? Again, these are not absolutely pending needs from, from the, the strategic perspective of saying, this is on our doorstep. This is saying, we would like to add this. And this is, this is, this is our approach of saying how much we need.
And Matt, if you could go back to that.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to note that a lot of these were pre-tranche three. So, you know, we put in money for business districts, maybe not exactly the same way. Projects of citywide significance, this is 3 million on top of the money we already approved for city.
Correct.
Significance.
Correct.
So I, I do think on that one though, I, I think their intention was to, to increase.
Yeah, it is.
Yes.
Yeah, it was. But I just want to say that we did. And same on the public safety equipment. That includes the 3 million we just did from general reserves.
Correct.
So it's, it, there is, we, we have, I'm just saying, it's just, it precedes some of our things.
And, and just to mention, I was at the, that developer meeting yesterday and Terry Stripes mentioned that they have already had seven of the 13 applicants for those dollars, the, the citywide significance. And so, once they hit 13, they'll have to put a pause till they kind of know how the numbers work out.
Perfect. Well, so that's, just like you said, I mean, some of these, yes, they, they loop into some of the requests. There's also been some offhanded requests that, that I haven't seen come through formally. Maybe I haven't combed through enough. I know there was a conversation on the, the studies for compensation and tell-staff that there was a discussion about from administration. There was, in, in a chart that we received the other day, the finance committee received the other day, there was again, 2.8 million that was in unfunded capital for 2022. Not to mention, they were saying that there is unfunded police and fire equipment for 2023 in the amount of 10.4 million. So those are the numbers that are kind of floating around. While that 7 million number is there within ARPA, there, there is a large need from the administration of needs that are not just on this list and, and not that we have already funded. So moving forward, we have budget opportunities. Opportunities meaning opportunities to fund, where to fund. The CFO, Tanya Wallace, has, has talked about the unallocated reserves. While initially we were at about 15.8 million is, is what was calculated by the finance department. That doesn't include the, the 3.2-ish million for the public safety capital that we just made the purchase on. So that's obviously going to deduct that, as well as the 250,000 for the, for the, the vote that, that was approved the other day. So that gets us down to about 12 million plus or minus. Then we have 1425, Fund 1425, which is the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. Right now, there's 13.5 million. And again, going back to that revenue replacement calculation, say for example, if, if there was an opportunity to, if there was a failed search or if there was a fund, or there was a funding initiative that was supported that, that no longer, council decided that is no longer an initiative that needs to be funded, that money could come back and that revenue replacement could be in that higher limit where we are saying that is closer to 26 million. Currently, as it states right now, there's only 13.5 million. But if we wanted to broaden that back in, if there was ever a sweepback, that, that number for revenue replacement to the city with that, the less restrictions could be much higher than that number, could, could go up to almost doubling. And that, that is, you know, unrestricted to a sense. Category two restricted, general fund contingency reserves. That per the RCW, or the SMC, I'm sorry, is, is approximately 10% of our overall budget. I believe our budget is, our expenditure budget is about $216 million in current year. So roughly 21 million in current balance. Though the, the contingency reserve is a very, very restricted budget to pull from. You know, the, the, the words that are out there that lay for the restrictions on there are unforeseen, unpredictable. And, and I don't think any of the, the consequences that we're coming into, the things that we're paying for right now are absolutely unforeseen. I mean, I, I think we knew that the, the contracts were coming up. I think we knew that we were going to have to pay for homelessness and housing. And I think we knew that we were going to have to pay for overtime because we had the same issue last year. So it'd be, it's a, it's a restrictive fund that is pretty hard to define a spend going out of it. Criminal justice fund, again, has quite a few restrictions on it. Right now, there's a little bit of definition from Washington State that is, that is allowing for fund balance or, or revenues to be taken out of there that, that help the fight of homelessness and poverty because they, they link those to a, a lessening in criminal activity. So, so I think it's until the end of 2023 that we're able to use those. Right now, there's a $12 million fund balance in there. And I was just pulling up these numbers. As I was sitting. $12 million fund balance in there right now, of which there is a $5.9 million expenditure, expenditure budget in there as well. So there's, there's $12 million in the fund balance, but we're also budgeting to spend roughly $6 million, as well as make $7 million within that budget this year.
Is that 6 million on like one thing, or is that just an accumulation of?
It's accumulation of things. Primarily, actually, that's the 3.7 million that when council amended the budget in 20, going into 2022. They, they, I think the administration was originally planning on pulling that through $15.90. They were, they were planning on using some of those dollars to fight homelessness issues. And council had made the decision to amend the budget, pull it from criminal justice funds because that's not what the intention of the $15.90 were for, for council. So there's about 3.7 million budgeted just for homelessness issues. Real estate excise task, I, I think it was mentioned the other day with, from a question from Brian. We do have a little bit more wiggle room there, though the, while, while the fund balance is increasing, this, this, any sort of expenditure that's going to be in there needs to be in, in the capital plan. And currently, there is no, there's no funding that we're identifying through REIT $2 in the capital plan.
And so that might, again, this is just brainstorming. And so, that might, again, this is just brainstorming, but to the degree that we wanted to purchase the Trent Shelter building and then not pay that $26,000 a month in rent for it, it could come out of that. We would just have to update the capital improvement plan before we did that.
Yep. The capital improvement plan would have to be amended at that point. Again, we talked about 1406. Right now, there's about a $900,000 fund balance in there. Currently, there's 340,000 budgeted for expenditures in there, as well as 400,000 in revenue. Sorry, 1595, 1590, housing and mental health services, 6.5 million in fund balance there. Roughly three, so, I, I wasn't able to find the expenditure balance that's in there because just, just for everybody, everybody's recollection, including my own, when I, when I read it, I knew I was missing something. The, the $10 million that we issued for affordable housing, we, we connected 6 million from ARPA funds, and we combined, we braided that funding with both 1406 and 1590. I wasn't able to find the encumbrance, but I, I have to guess roughly based on the affordable, based on Fund 1725 and 1595, that it's going to be roughly 3.5 million in cost that's coming from 1590, at least in that award. There might be more that is on the horizon. I, I know that the CHHS department is working diligently on trying to get those funds out as quick as possible.
So, we were just talking earlier about spending that down, and that we have these two projects left that we can't fund out of there. But if we have 3.5 million in there, is that not enough to cover these other two projects that we're talking about?
Uh, which?
If you, if you add the home funds, it would cover maybe one of them.
Okay.
But then, the 9% tax credit would cover the other one.
Okay.
So, we could, by deploying the money, we could do both.
Okay.
If we do it strategically. And we're trying to see if we can get that on Monday's pie's agenda. Jacoby says no, but we'll see. We'll get, well, Lori and I will twist his arms and say, yeah.
Side conversation.
Yeah.
All right. So, to kind of wrap things up, we have the compensation reserves, which we already talked about earlier. That's that 1.5 million that, that the council had allocated, as well as the 950 that the administration had allocated, netting out to about 2.5 million. We know where that's going to go. It's, it's restricted, but it's, it's well in need, and it'll go directly to that. Category three, we have internal loans. That's going to be our Spokane investment pool loans. Currently, the way that the investment policy is stated is, is that you can have 15% of the debt portfolio outstanding. And, and roughly calculated that going into 2023, or at the tail end of 2022, we'll have about $12 million in capacity. At year-end last year, I believe we had 37 million, 37 million outstanding, or 48 million outstanding? 48?
38.
38 million outstanding. But we, we've paid off, obviously, 3.5 early in the year, 3.5 at the tail end of the year. Yeah.
Are there restrictions or limitations in terms of using a SIP loan for ongoing expenses? Because that would be pretty concerning, obviously.
I'd have to double check, but I would almost.
The main restriction is you have to have a revenue source to pay it off. So, it doesn't matter so much whether it's an ongoing or a one-time, but you have to have the revenue identified. So, you're not just borrowing money. You're just like, no, this is how it's going to get paid.
Which, I mean, arguably, if you're going to be borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, why wouldn't you cut out the intermediary and not pay the interest on the expense at hand? If you're paying for ongoing expenses, from my, from my perspective, right? Because if we're going to do, I mean, say, if we have a 1.2 million dollar, or a $1 million cost of, of something, and we're saying, oh, well, you know what? We're, we're going to take out $500,000 of, of loans to cover the other, you know, we can cover 50% of it right now, and the other 50% of it, we need to break out. Well, you're going to break that out on a five-year basis, so you're going to get $600,000 in cost no matter what. Why wouldn't you just take the, take the hit somewhere else, if you can, obviously, and say like, let's, let's match expenses to revenue, or expenses now to expenses that we're, that we're actually having go out?
My, I guess my, my biggest concern right now is just sustainability.
Right.
And, and I don't want us to, to get into it, even if it's just psychologically, into a situation where we're borrowing to pay an ongoing expense, and then we're right back trying to figure out how we pay for it a year later.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean.
Because you can refinance SIP loans, so that's, you could get into that thing. Oh.
Yeah.
But the parking is a good example, like that, that equipment and that thing is like, no, we're going to have increased revenue in parking to pay for that SIP loan. So, if you can really make the case for it.
Before we go on, Michelle was going to make a comment, I believe.
I'm always happy to have Michelle.
I just wanted to address Cathcart, Councilmember Cathcart's question. Almost all, 100% of the SIP loans that we do are for capital.
Yeah.
None of them are for operational needs, and it's strictly has a revenue source, whether it's the general fund making the payment, or another fund making the payment.
And I, I just bring it up because we're talking, I think, generally about operating, and this is one of the three ideas, and so, I just want to be certain that we're not thinking in those terms, so.
Correct.
Was that 12 million capacity more?
Yes, yes.
That's what we have left.
That we have left.
Available.
So, say for, I mean, so, that's going to break out, generally, a SIP loan is going to break out in a five-year increment. So, if you were to get, if you were to take on 12 million, it's going to break out, divided by five, and that's going to be the additional revenue that, or the additional funding source that you're going to need to identify if you're putting into, if you're theoretically putting it into your budget.
I had one other before you get to that. We discussed at the end of 2022, about a million dollars per year on the fire pension. Again, that pension fund is closed, there's no one else going into it, it's very predictable, it's that, and we, within the time crunch, we didn't do it, but, so, I just, I would just throw that back into your list of things against, especially since we're looking at trying to pay a bunch of shorter-term fire things.
Absolutely. And that's, I mean, there's, there, I just will say, there's not a whole lot of money there.
Yeah.
But it's definitely a source. I mean, you know, we're, we're counting pennies at this point in time. I'm just, sorry, writing that down. So, lastly, is going to be the utility tax. It's, it's a controversial one, and there, there's, there's a conversation of doing it. We roughly think, I mean, in conversations of talking to individuals within the organization, it could bring on about another 4 to 5 million. But this isn't going to be, if, if we go down that route, it's, it's probably going to be a conversation that's being had for a while. There's going to be negotiations on both sides, and, you know, what, when we get there is, is probably not realistic to put it into your 2022 view.
My, my sense, talking to the county, is they're giddy to go to war over this thing.
Yeah.
So, I think litigation will go on for a while.
Yeah. I mean, I think, from my perspective, and, and again, I mean, I'm just one person, but my, my perspective that if it's, if it's going to cross the finish line, I, I really think it needs to be, if that, those, those charges do start getting incurred, I think it's going to have to be a joint regional sort of incentive that it's going to, it's going to impact not just the city, but it's going to impact the, the entire region. And that's, that's, that's where I think the only, I mean, public safety is obviously, you know, on, on everybody's radar right now. And so, it's like, okay, well, if, if we could talk about that and say like, you know, are we going to start collecting it, and we split it between the different agencies within the area? It could be a win-win for everybody. It, it's, it's an up-in-the-air type thing, but it's going to, like everybody has said, it's going to be a lengthy conversation.
Yeah. Kind of a win-win for everybody, except for the people of the city and the county, because that money, that charge will inevitably be passed on to the, to the constituent. And so, I mean, that, that's not money that the county is just going to say, hey, we have an extra 4 or 5 million. Okay, here you go. Somebody's going to pay for that, and it's going to be the people, so.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I agree with you. I, I also just think that, I mean, right now, the citizens of the, the city are actually paying, they're subsidizing the people that are, the, the individuals that are using that system that are, that are outside and not being charged. So, I mean, you're, you're going to go both ways on those conversations.
And that amount's ongoing? 4 to 5 million a year?
I mean, if it were to be charged, yeah. I mean, you could, you could go upper high, upper low. It's, it's just, I mean, you're throwing darts at a dartboard at this point, because it's, it's, it's an open negotiation if those discussions would have.
And you can go back at least three years, maybe four years. If it, if there was going to be a war, the winner-take-all kind of thing would be three or four years in the back. That's another reason why there might be a negotiated solution, because it would cut off the back pay for it.
So, that said, next steps. What are the next steps here? Well, I think when I, when I present next, whenever that may be, we, we need to determine where these funding will come from for Level 1 challenges, right? Those are the ones that we know, we've got to pay them immediately. Those are primarily the bargaining units, their early bargaining agreements. Determine what the prioritization of Level 2 and Level 3 challenges are for 2022 in the future. Arguably, you could probably put Level 2 in its own category, because we know that those are coming as well. Again, if we, you know, I mean, that's why we were faced with the overtime crunch last year, last November, is we came up to the end of the year, and we were faced with covering the overtime at the very end of the year. And if we didn't pass that, if we didn't pass some sort of way to fund it, it's, it's in the RCWs that if you don't pass it, it's, it's a misdemeanor offense of some sort. So, it's like, we've got to do these things. This isn't something that we can put off till next year. And then, we need to address the capital plan and how it consides with, or coincides with the city's long-term financial goals. That, that relates to the REIT 2 dollars that we're talking about, but that also really relates to a lot of the different asks that are coming out, not just police vehicles, not just fire vehicles, but we're also talking about fire stations. We're talking about just a whole, overall system-wide review on how that capital plan is going to impact us in the next, you know, 1, 2, 5 years, because there's a lot of things that are coming. Review the 2023 and beyond budget coincides with the last bullet point, challenges in relationship to the projected resources available. You know, what, what we had talked about earlier is, yeah, we, we might have the, the money to pay for all of the absolute net necessities for this year, but then we deplete all of the reserves. There's no coming back to those. And if we're looking at leaning up against a recession, depleting your savings account right before going into recession is, is problematic. And so, if that's, if that's going to be the objective, or if that's going to be the, the, the plan that, that the council takes and the city takes, then it's okay, what's next step? Because we're going to have to recoup those savings somewhere else, because if, if we go into a recession with depleted savings accounts, it's, it's going to be problematic. And lastly, we want to work with the administration on communicating priorities and how they'll address those in the preliminary budget. We don't want to have a disparity between a preliminary budget that they're saying and priorities that council has been, you know, voicing for the past, how many ever months that we're going to be voicing them going into this and say, okay, now we have to go back to the drawing board, and now we have to do these, this horse trading behind closed doors. Let's work together. The next steps is to talk to the administration and say, okay, this is what we're kind of seeing. These are what we're worried about. This is where we're kind of thinking about putting in these expenses into these buckets. How does that impact your plan? How does that impact, impact what you're going to do long-term? And I, I think that's the best way to get to a collaborative sort of response going into the 2023 budget. Questions? Yeah.
Could we, I don't know if it's for your part two or just future budget discussions, but could we see sort of those lists of where the, the revenue sources are and which expenditures they, they would?
Yep, that's, that's, yep, next one.
Okay.
That's, next one is kind of just saying, okay, this could theoretically go in, you know, this bucket here could theoretically house this, 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 and expense.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, that's next, that's next presentation. And then, it talks about how that impacts 2023.
All right. That was super helpful.
That was.
Yeah.
And I look forward to more of that. But anything else for the good of the order?
Well, I just look forward to, these are all potentials, but we haven't really heard where the cutbacks could come from. So, I look forward to that conversation, because if we think they're not going to happen, then I think we're deluding ourselves at some point.
Right.
And my focus is maintaining the employees. That's my priority.
Right.
So, I look forward to the administration's input on that.
I mean, unfortunately, but truly, at the end of the day, you know, it, it's, it's going to have to look at everything. It's, it's, it's going to say, what are, what is our mission, and how do we accomplish that within the limited resources that we have? Because, you know, it's, it's not like we can drum up more business out there. We're getting what we have, and, and that's what we have.
On, on that, real quick, it would be great, too, to see a list of, of items that are, are required by state statute, that we have to, as a city, run, fund, et cetera.
Okay.
Versus the things that we're, we can choose to.
Our ancillary-type things, yeah.
Yes, exactly. That would be really helpful as well.
Yeah, yeah.[1762.86]